All right. Good evening. The time being 7:00 p.m. on February 26th. All members of the planning board being present, I call this meeting to order. I'll let anyone in the audience know right off the bat that agenda items C and D, which are 402 Main Street and 1438 Main Street, are going to be continued to our next meeting, so we won't hear anything on either of those tonight. So if you're here for that, you're free to leave. You will not miss anything. With that, bring us to agenda item A, which is approval of minutes, which we do not have any of. Agenda item B, committee reports, administrative actions. Any committee reports any of the members wish to make at this time?
All set, Mr. Chairman.
All set, Mr. Chairman.
Hearing none, we'll move on to agenda item B2, which is the town planning report. Ms. Lauda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item of note, we have one new application filing for our March 11th meeting. It is a site plan review, special permit and land disturbance permit for a multifamily dwelling to be located at 2551 Main Street and 20 Glenwood Road. Next item, I have office hours continuing this week at the senior center and the library. The senior center hours will be tomorrow, February 27th, from 10:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. and at the library on Thursday, February 29th, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And again, just restating that the goal of these office hours is to help educate residents on the planning process, how zoning works, and current projects in an informal setting, and folks are welcome to join me there. Other specific dates for future meetings are posted on the town website, and folks can feel free to ask anything. Next item, the third and final winter market will be held this Thursday at the senior center, February 29th, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. Most of the market will feature over 25 to 30 artists and creators inside the senior center with birds' nest Italian street food parked outside with hot ready meals. Next item, and I'm sure folks in the audience as well as the board members can see here, we are set up for an election in here right now. We are in midst of early voting for the presidential primary election, and a reminder that that election officially is to take place on Tuesday, March 5th, from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And I recommend folks check the town website to confirm your precinct and voting location. And if you have any questions, please contact the town clerk's office. Last item is exploring certification in government contracting. The entrepreneurship center community teamwork is hosting a free government contracting seminar to provide small businesses with valuable information on how to obtain certification to conduct business with federal, state, and local governments. Government contracting has a lot of intricacies to navigate compared to the private sector, and the entrepreneurship center is there to help. And just as a bit of color, prior to my working with the town of Tewksbury, I worked for a federal government contract, and I can say firsthand that those contracts are incredibly complicated, but there is also a merit to having small businesses as part of those projects. So these kinds of programs are really important. The seminar is scheduled for Thursday, March 7th, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. at Middlesex Community College, and registration is required. I recommend folks visit the eastcentergovcon event bright dot com or just visit CTI's website, and you can contact the center with any questions. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I do actually have something I'd like to mention from NEMCOG. There was a Zoom meeting tomorrow night, I think today, or maybe tomorrow morning might be the last you can register for it. It's from what's called Vision Zero, and it's the Greater Lowell Vision Zero Public Forum. And during this virtual meeting hosted by NEMCOG, transportation planning staff, and engineering consultant will present the preliminary high injury crash network communicate injury risks and discuss the approach for developing a regional safety action plan for the Greater Lowell region. So basically, it's talking about traffic in the area, which is always seems to come up at a lot of meetings, and a lot of people have concerns it might be an interesting Zoom for people to take a peek at if you'd like.
All right. Thank you. All right. Moving on to agenda item C, which is 402 Main Street. Petitioners asked that we continue this. I have it penciled in for 7:05 on March 11th. Do I have a motion to continue?
Promoted.
A motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and second. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Moving on to agenda item D, which is, I'm sorry, agenda item D, yes, 1438 Main Street. Petitioners asked to have that continued. We have that penciled in for 7:10. So do I have a motion to continue that?
Promoted.
A motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and second. And all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Moving on to agenda item E, 1600 Shawshin Street, 1. Once you get settled, just give your names for the record. The floor is yours. Matthew Costa with Beals Associates.
Dana Moore with National Development.
Nailed it.
Alex, did we get this fixed? I thought maybe someone did.
Working so far. Good evening. We're here with an update on the proposed project at 1600 Shawshin Street, Lot 1, which deals with a proposed warehouse facility. We'll jump into just a quick existing conditions. Refresh here on the screen, you'll see the boundaries of both the project we're speaking on here, Lot 1, as well as the adjacent lot that was subdivided, Lot 2. Currently, the site consists of the H&amp;B manufacturing facility and their ancillary uses in terms of kiln structures in the back, office spaces in the front, and then workshop space throughout the facility, a number of different structures. And through the subdivision plan, we're looking to create two separate lots, Lot 1 and 2. Lot 1 being on the right, where you'll see the larger structure, 180,000 square foot warehouse structure. Lot 2 on the left side, you'll see those two separated structures, which is a reduced floor plate and program for the H&amp;B lumber facility. Zering in a little bit on the site, just again, a refresher. I know we've reviewed it in the past, 180,000 gross square feet. We're also looking to include 10,000 square feet of potential office space, potentially on the ground floor, potentially a mezzanine structure, but have accounted for that parking density in our parking counts. Towards the front of the site, you'll see our significant landscaping area, which also serves as stormwater retention structures, either through below grade chambers, or you'll see kind of in the blue area, some at-grade basins. You'll also notice that in the shaded areas on to the right side of the screen and to the bottom left of the screen, you'll see kind of the outline of a parking space. Those are related to our parking waiver request to reduce the parking count by 30%. So we've allocated those space in the event the building commissioner determines that parking is not sufficient, we can go ahead and provide those parking structures as needed. Circulation throughout the site, so there is a fire lane throughout the site, trailer storage to the right of the screen, loading is to the back, so shielded by the actual structure. Also note that through our landscaping, we create some birmingham through just great changes to provide some additional visual shields in addition to the trees from the neighbors across the street. So through that and angling the building, we've done the best we can at shielding the kind of size of the structure from a public realm. Little bit of an overview on the building itself. So through calculating building height, just based on the mean average grade, looking at a calculated height that's just shy of 46 feet, so we are rounding up to 46. It's one of the waivers that we're looking for is that planning board's discretion to increase the height below the 60-feet threshold. So that's noted in the screen here in terms of how we're coming up with that elevation based on the mean average grade. And then just a summary of our zoning analysis, just reflecting that we have either met the minimums or exceeded them in terms of all the required open space. I did note the building height exception that we're looking for. And then on to the right, you'll see the parking summary, which notes the required space counts of both the warehouse and the office space, as well as that 30% reduction that we're applying for as part of that reserved parking program. And then to the bottom, you'll see the counts on the required ADA spaces and van accessible spaces as well, as well as the parking or the bicycle parking racks that we're providing through the warehouse program. The last kind of image I wanted to pull up was an overview of snow storage. So that's one of the topics that came up in our previous discussions was, one of the waivers that we're looking for is the ability to consolidate the snow storage on hardscape. We just feel that through stormwater treatment and also just landscaping practices, we prefer to remove it outside of the actual landscaping into hardscape, but it was a comment by the planning board that they'd like to see options if we wanted to just maintain the bylaws and place the snow storage in a landscaped area. So you'll see in blue where we were previously figuring the snow storage would be located, and in green, some additional options, maintaining that same volume, just showing that it's possible if we wanted to move it outside of the hardscape, but we can accommodate it via landscaping areas, outside of the areas that are reserved for stormwater treatment. So that's the general overview. Having circled back with any questions on the site plan, I think the more relevant one for this meeting in terms of an update is just talking about our process with the engineering division. So we did have a couple of rounds back and forth to that, most recently receiving a letter last week that, well, I would say is probably as good as it gets in terms of the comments received. There are some open comments that I think they're just leaving there for the record or just to state their opinion, but as it relates to the planning board, we believe their feedback is sufficient to make a determination on the building. But again, happy to review that in detail if there's any comments in particular that wanted to be addressed. But there is, you know, one comment that I know is open that was a discussion previously that I want to kind of keep you guys are thinking on is that as it relates to the greatest extent practicable from a DEP perspective and raising the grade. We decided to go in front of the conservation commission and basically show our thinking in terms of meeting the DEP regulations and following the letter to bylaw versus the discretion associated with the greatest extent practicable. We did receive our order of conditions from the conservation commission, so from our perspective, you know, we believe that to be some feedback in terms of whether we are meeting that intent and going to the fullest extent practicable or not. So that is our position in terms of how we've left that. We decided it wasn't productive to continue to go back and forth with the DPW on that. So that is a comment, like I said, that they're maintaining for the record, but from our purposes, we believe that we've got a path through the process that we follow. One other item too, for clarification, there's a note on there as it relates to peer review. In some of our earlier meetings, it was noted that a peer review would not be required from a traffic perspective. One of the notes from the engineering division is that if the planning board chooses to not require a peer review, there will be one required through a physical alteration permit, which, you know, a little bit inconsistent with our understanding of those permits. That to us is a non-discretionary permit versus this being a discretionary permit. Traffic studies and peer reviews are typically more associated with those discretionary permits. So we have acknowledged if that's a requirement, and the town collectively agrees that that's required, we will comply. We're going to follow what is told of us, but we do intend to raise that issue as a talking point when that physical alteration permit is being pursued. So again, acknowledging that it is an option that might be in front of us, but we would love to maintain that dialogue as to whether that should be required or not for physical alteration permits, given the intent of what that permit is for.
All right. That's it, right?
That's it. And then on the screen here, I just have a reminder, refresh for the group in terms of the special permits that we're after, the obvious use special permit that's associated with a site plan review, and some of the secondary special permits associated with building height, parking count reduction based on that reserved area, a reduction in interior driveway to 20 feet in width, and then some waivers, one for continuous curbing to comply with our stormwater management plan, and then the aforementioned snow storage waiver as well. And then just some notes here on some conditions that were previously discussed in terms of things that can be approved with condition.
All right. All right. We'll start with Ms. Lozotti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you go back to that snow storage slide?
Sure.
So yeah, for the alternate snow storage here, how high do these go up? Like specifically, I'm kind of section A2 there that might have the same sightline issues that you cited with some of the compact spaces in the edge of that lot, although it does look like you angled it so that it whole.
Yeah, the snow storage was angled to stay out of the sightlines. That's that kind of gray hatching along the front. The requirement's really an area, so volume height-wise wasn't really taken into account, but typically, we can, we usually assume up to eight feet tall.
Yeah, I think that was the only questions I had for this. I'm off that, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Mr. Champa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So just looking at, you know, obviously, you've had a lot of back and forth, a lot of progress with IDRs, comments, and concerns. So they seem to be concerned about snow storage and snow runoff or snowmelt running into the stormwater system. Can you just address that? Is that, have you designed something that will prevent that from happening, or have you calculated somehow that it's not going to happen?
Sure. I'll defer to Matt on the larger response, but I think that's the backdrop as to our preference on storing the snow on the hardscape. We believe it'll allow the storm management system to actually perform the way it's intended to, which is basically get all that runoff to those drain outlets and actually treat those before they're either infiltrated or disposed of. So that's the intent of having on the hardscape area. It's just a little bit more difficult to control if you keep it in landscape, less control over the runoff. So definitely something that we factored in our initial plan, a little bit more difficult to manage if you choose to proceed with the area in green, which is on those landscaped areas.
Okay, because it seems like what they're saying is they want to see something in the design that will ensure no snow is plowed into the stormwater system.
We have no snow storage signs, no snow dumping signs that are placed around the stormwater units, so any of our infiltration ponds along the top and down the swale, which is down the long side. So there's no snow dumping signage that's provided. And then our operation and maintenance plan also calls out, I think, the use of orange construction fence and staking during the winter months to also make sure that they're not plowing or dumping snow in there. For us, it's really, it's a higher, when you pile snow into an area, especially into a landscape area, you get the higher concentration of the salts and the oils. So if we can put it into the pavement areas, then our stormwater design is adequate enough to remove those things before it gets into the infiltration and directly into groundwater and stuff. So it's intended, designed to hit those water quality standards of DEP.
Okay. And then, let's see here. Intent agreement, addressed. The, so I know we're not, well, I'm not sure. I don't think we're going to be asking you to raise the entire site.
Sure.
I think we've talked about that a little bit at previous meetings, and we talked about furthest extent practicable, but they did have something in here about taking care of the manhole covers themselves, making sure that they're sealed and whatnot. Even though you're not addressing the grading, are you still planning on complying with that comment?
I believe we did.
As far as how to protect those manhole covers from, I guess you would call it seepage?
Yes, yeah, it'd be the structures, the joints of the structures below ground to make sure that those are properly sealed. They will be. Typically, also every, when you install those sewer structures, they make you do a vacuum test. So you'll plug the manholes and plug the pipes and run a vacuum that has to hold a certain amount of pressure for a certain period of time in order for the DPW to sign off on it. So it's noted in our plan that we'll all be done.
Okay. So it sounds like for all intents and purposes, you're in the good graces of IDR or have a plan in place to meet all of their requirements.
Yes.
With that being said, I have no further questions.
Mr. Duffy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I appreciate all the work you guys have done to address the concerns of engineering and residents and so on and so forth, so kudos for that. One of the things I think that's been kind of lacking in the past, and it's one of Alex's recommendations, is to, you know, be vigilant about your as-built plans, particularly your undergrounds. You know, all too often, all the underground goes in, then everybody's scratching their head wondering where it is.
Sure.
You know, I'd like to insist that that documentation happens along the way, and, you know, just to make sure that everybody knows where everything is, particularly underground. Above ground, sure, you can go back and find out where everything is. Below ground, different story. So I would feel pretty strongly about that.
Absolutely, and noted. All of our subcontractors, we work with an affiliate contractor, Cranshaw Construction, underneath the national development umbrella. All of our subcontractors are required to take their own as-builds. Our general contractor will consolidate all of them and will consolidate it to an existing condition plan to submit at the end. One thing I did want to note, and this may be an offline discussion with Alex, is no it says at a minimum to be required, so just wanted to figure you guys' brains as to things that might be required beyond the as-builds, just so we can prep for it, but there will be no trouble having the interim or final as-builds set provided.
We can discuss that when the building permit's issued.
That's really all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Mr. Fattali.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we resolved the driveway width issue?
We did. So we presented two options to the engineering division, kind of stated our case pro and con. I think at the end of the day, they were on the same page with us that a reduced driveway area but without the median would be just the most efficient path. There was another alternate that we provided that showed pedestrians coming into the site a bit, crossing a median, coming back out of the site, but it's actually a longer walking path, even though not all of it was on that crosswalk. So we ended up with the plan that's on the screen here.
Okay. So 70 feet, is that what I'm understanding?
I believe it's about 70 feet, correct?
Okay. All right. I want to commend you guys on your diligence as far as getting this done. It's been a long, long process. We've seen you guys sometimes, but not all the time.
Sure.
But it's good to see it's coming to a conclusion, so.
Appreciate it.
But thanks for all your hard work.
Yes, sir.
I'll say it, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. So I don't have anything to add on what's already been asked. I'll just say you've seen the proposed conditions and whatnot from Alex, correct?
Yes, sir.
No issues with those, correct?
No issues, Dr.
Okay. All right. So other than that, the only thing I'll ask you about the snow storage, obviously, the preference is to go with the blue.
Yes, sir.
Is the idea that in the event that it's, you know, a heavy season, that you're going to use the green, or is at that point, you're going to start trucking it off?
The latter.
Okay.
Green was just an alternate option.
All right.
Certainly use it, but if we're getting to the point where we're having that much snow stacked up, we would just haul it off the site.
Okay. All right. So with that, I'll open up the audience, anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns? Only once, twice? All right. So I'll bring it back to the board. What is the pleasure of the board?
Making a motion, Mr. Chairman, to close the public hearing.
Right, a motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and second. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimous. As to the waivers as requested, there are two. Do I have a motion on the waivers?
Making a motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve the waivers as discussed tonight with the conditions set forth and Alex's email to everybody.
All right.
Don't interrupt. Was it, I thought it was three waivers.
So in the discretion of the zoning bylaw, three of those items are called out as special permits, which can be kind of ...packeted with the special use permit of the warehouse.
So we get the two waivers. So we have a motion on the two waivers. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and second. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimous. And then as to the site plan, yeah, site plan review and special permit, do I have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
So we have a motion made.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, and those are the terms as described here, and they cover the rest of, as Mr. Champa asked, so those are taken care of.
Yep.
All right. Do I have a motion made and second? All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. And then lastly, we have the land disturbance permit. Do we have a motion on the land disturbance?
Making a motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve the land disturbance permit at 1600 Shawshin Street, Lot 1.
Motion made and seconded. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimous. All right. That takes care of 1600 Shawshin 1. That moves us on to agenda item E, Shawshin Street, I'm sorry, F, Shawshin Street, 1600 Shawshin Street 2. Just for the record again, I'll have you guys give your names again, just for
Dana Moore with National Development.
Matt Costa with Beals Associates.
If you pull that down, so you can hear your focus.
All right. The floor is yours, gentlemen.
So in front of us, we're talking about Lot 2, which alluded to in the previous discussion, but is the, kind of the, we call it the dumbbell-shaped parcel that's to the left of the screen here. So currently on the site, as I mentioned, this is the home of the H&amp;B lumber facility. What we'll do with Lot 2 here in partnership with H&amp;B is construct a smaller footprint, more modernized facility so they can continue their operations. You'll see on the next slide, their primary structure is to the rear of the site, which is also where their primary parking will be, and some circulation space for their loading activities. And then on the front of the site, they have a smaller storage warehouse, not necessarily an occupiable space, mostly intended to just have storage taken in and out and using golf carts or other forklifts as well, will be transferred to and from the rear to the front of the site. We are also, and one of the things we'll note here in terms of a waiver that you guys can see on the plan, is we're looking to repurpose the existing curb cut that is adjacent to that Vale Street intersection. As we understand it, that, you know, there's an avenue for a waiver to allow for that intersection or that curb cut to remain adjacent to the intersection, which we think is just beneficial, given familiarity with the curb cut and the fact that it is, you know, an existing condition. So zeroing in a little bit more, you can see we do have some secondary parking spaces that really, you know, are above and beyond when it relates to the employee count of the H&amp;B team. And they know their roster currently and the roster that they anticipate to have with their new facilities. So from a day-to-day perspective, the majority of the parking, we believe, will occur in those 60 spaces that are to the top right of the screen, as well as some of those additional spaces that are adjacent to the left side of the building on the screen. The parking, should it occur in that area by the storage space, you know, our stance there is that the H&amp;B team currently uses golf carts and forklifts to navigate their site. They'll be doing the same thing if they need to move items or people from the front to the rear of the site. But we do have some signage to prevent any sort of pedestrian traffic moving for across that dumbbell area. So that's our intent as it relates to the secondary parking. Same thing as the previous presentation, there is a smaller office component, whether that's on ground floor or mezzanine space that we've accounted for in terms of the density and the parking requirements. This one's about 7,500 square feet, but obviously, that's developing in terms of exact square footage as we finalize their actual layout and building plan. And then the only other thing to note is the majority of, if not all, of the stormwater infiltration is taking place below grade on this site. There are some shared structures, so we will be entering into an REA consent agreement, which is one of the things that the engineering division noted, which we'll happily have as a condition of approval and something that we'll submit to the town as a review before we actually execute that agreement.
All right.
And then zoning analysis on the screen here, again, showing that we either meet or exceed any of the requirements, aside from maybe some of the waivers that we're looking for. One of the big ones is just principal structures. So we do consider the storage building and that building to the rear of the site to be a principal structure. The requirement is that we can only have one, so we'll look for a waiver in terms of placing an additional structure on the lot. And similar as well, from a parking perspective, there is a waiver that we're after to reduce the parking count, again, just based on the employment roster that the H&amp;B team has. Don't believe that that volume of parking is required, but we have allocated the space on Lot 1, should it be required to be built by the building commissioner. That will be part of our consent agreement, or actually, our REA with the Lot 2 owner between Lot 1, just to note the rights for parking in that space between the two parcels. Similarly, on the screen, we've got the, in blue, the snow storage areas that we originally proposed. We, longer volumes, but we were able to fit the snow storage area in landscaped area or some adjacent areas in the green. But, you know, same rationale, as we prefer, just given the ability to, you know, direct that stormwater from that snow into the proper channels, we prefer to have it in those areas in the blue, and should exceed those volumes, we would manage through trucking and hauling the snow volumes. But we just wanted to prove out that there's an alternate that is possible. And last item is just an overview of the special permits and uses that we're looking for through the site plan review and the special permit process.
All right. All right. We'll go the same way. Mr. Lozotti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Once again, can I have you go back to the snow storage slide?
Sure, yeah.
Thank you. So just one quick question, kind of to the north of the two-story kind of mill building there, that
Sure.
the blue spaces. Assuming that you all know the number of employees that you expect to be working in there, and it's enough for the parking, does that line up even when there's snow in those spaces?
Yes. I mean, again, we have that overflow in the front of the site, but we do believe there's an excess even in the plan now between their roster. And they take various shifts as well, so it's not like peak parking will happen at the same time. So, there should be sufficient spaces if, for some reason, you know, the snow does take up that area in the blue. Probably not our first option if we're stacking snow, but if we get to that amount of volume, we'll certainly manage it across the parking.
All right. That's all the questions I have. Mr. Chair?
Thank you. Just where this dumbbell parcel borders another property?
Yes, sir.
I just want to make sure we're clear that none of your stormwater runoff, everything is going to be contained on your own site, even though you're surrounding the other site?
Absolutely. There's actually a bit of a grade. The plan doesn't show very well, but there's a little bit of a grade change as it relates to the two parcels, almost kind of like a knee wall along that dumbbell that actually kind of, their parcel adjacent actually sits above the grade of the Lot 2. So, there really wouldn't be much runoff in that direction anyway, but yes, all of our stormwater design is self-sufficient on this site, aside from the structures that it does share with Lot 1.
Last summer, we kind of learned everything there is to learn about ridiculous amounts of rain and runoff and where it can go. So, I could just imagine water from there, you know, coming over.
Coming that way.
But if there's a knee wall or something else, that will
Yeah, good volume of water, for sure.
And then, there was a discrepancy between electronically submitted plans and paper plans? Has that all been cleared up with IDR?
Yeah, I think, so what we were trying to do with our submission was just clean up the sheets that were, there were comments on, rather than resubmitting the full plan set. But we will clean everything up and submit a consolidated kind of four-record plan that correctly notes any of those adjustments we were trying to make.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Mr. Duffy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, you know, I realize that the stormwater issue has been pretty much taken care of there. Is that the reason why on Lot 1, or is that part of the reason why the roof wants to slope from the back, basically the back of the building towards the parking area in the front? And all of that water is going to be contained with a couple of roof leaders, or?
That's correct. I'll
Yes. Yeah, we did not have any good separation in the back part of the site on the loading dock side. Obviously, the loading dock's four feet lower, so it even brought us closer to bad soil and high groundwater. So, we pitched the roof towards the front, towards that larger infiltration basin. So, there is going to be adequately sized roof leaders that will capture that water and direct it towards the basin.
Okay, that makes sense. And that was all good with conservation and engineering and so forth?
Yes, sir.
Yep.
That's really all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Mr. Vitale? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of questions, and would you guys go on? But did you not do test pits prior to a recent?
We did. We've done, we've done about three rounds of test pits. So, to your point earlier, there's been so much, you know, water over the last year or so, that every round we did was a little bit of a different condition of rainy season for us. But yes, we've done a number of test pits.
I was looking in the notes, and I said that you had not done them, but then you just did them recently, I believe.
No, so there was one comment on a previous, on the most recent review regarding a specific test pit in a location. Because that test pit wasn't done in that specific location, we actually modified slightly the stormwater management plan so that it wasn't in an area that required a test pit.
Good. So, I guess you found out the water levels were higher than you expected, right? Correct?
Yeah, which is surprising, because usually those test pits will, they measure for seasonal high groundwater. So, even if the water's not there, usually you have a pretty good indicator of where that water table is. There's been so much rain, and as you guys well know, that some of those seasonal highs have actually been exceeded. So, good to know with those additional test pits.
So, just for the public's knowledge, you're putting in two buildings, right? Two 25-foot buildings, is that correct?
The building on the rear is slightly taller. Yes, there are two structures going in. There's the one on the right of the plan, the one-story building, and there's the one on the rear of the plan, the two-story.
So, what's the two-story building? A little higher, how much higher?
It sits within the 40-foot allowance.
I thought it was 40 feet, but I seen you had 25 foot, but that's fine. So, just two buildings, so just so everyone knows. So, my other question I have is, did you resolve all the issues with your robot as far as those legal issues and stuff?
Yes, sir.
You did? Okay, great. So, my last question is, when will construction begin?
We're looking to pull a permit pretty quickly, especially after the, we'll submit for our building permit here. If we get approval within the appeal period, we like to pull it as soon as that appeal period is over and start demo and abatement on that dumbbell section. Just to remind the planning board in terms of a previous discussion on phasing, the phasing for Lot 2 has to precede the phasing for Lot 1. So, we'll need to get H&amp;B's building substantially complete and operational prior to demo and abatement of the remainder of their site, just so that they don't have that downtime. Once they're operational on Lot 2, we'll start demo and construction on the adjacent lot.
Okay. Great. So, I have one more, I forgot here, but any potential tenants?
Not at the moment. We actually are in discussions with a few, but until we get to the point where we're closer to construction start on the warehouse, usually tenants aren't too committal, they want to see the actual progress, maybe getting closer to a building permit, so.
Good, good, good. I want to commend you guys on, again, doing some more work on, great work, and I think I've seen more paper from you guys than anything in the past 10 years of my time on the planning board, but
I appreciate you guys bearing that.
It's costly too, but Mr. Collins has got plenty of money, so we're okay. But thank you very much for all your hard work. Really appreciate it.
The chair is all set as well. So, we'll open up to the audience. Anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns? Only once, twice, bring it back to the board. What is the pleasure of the board?
I'm making a motion, Mr. Chairman, to close the public hearing.
Motion made. Do I have a second? Motion made in second. All's in favor, signify by saying aye. All those opposed, motion carries unanimous. As to the waivers as listed, do I have a motion?
Making a motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve the waivers at 1600 Shawshene Street, Lot 2, as proposed.
All right. So, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimous. As to the site plan review and special permit, do I have a motion?
I'm making a motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve the site plan special permit at 1600 Shawshene Street, Lot 2.
Second.
I have a motion made in second, and that will include all the items listed on the
Recommendations, yeah.
Recommendations. So, that, motion made in second, and all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimous. And for the land disturbance permit?
Making a motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve the land disturbance permit at 1600 Shawshene Street, Lot 2.
Motion made. Motion made in second, and all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimous. Good luck, gentlemen.
Good luck. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right. That brings us to Agenda Item G, which is 770 Main Street.
Good evening. Ben Osgood, Ranger Engineering Group. Since the last time we were here, we've worked through the comments with the review engineers. I think we may have one additional note we need to add, otherwise, we're all good with them. The plan has had a couple of changes, you know, in listening to the board. We've changed the parking lot configuration around. Every space now has a sidewalk at the head of the space. So, we moved the sidewalks. I didn't know you could do electronics.
It's okay.
We moved the sidewalks. We had crosswalks that were striped areas behind the spaces. They are now full sidewalks at the head of the spaces along the property lines. And in the center aisle, we've changed it around, and we've added sidewalks on the head of all those spaces. So, every parking space is serviced by a sidewalk. We have a crosswalk going into the, from the center spaces into the front of the building. And then the other change, we did add a wall around the back of the building so we could just make the area flatter to provide the play areas for the kids. So, there's, I believe it's 8,000 square feet of play area around the back of the building. You know, otherwise, all the comments were technical stormwater type things that we've addressed, so that's all, that's all I have.
All right. We'll start with Mr. Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Reviewing your application, how many proposed students do you figure you have in the facility?
It's 150 students is the maximum capacity.
Okay. You think you'll have that, or is that unknown?
In talking to the operator, they do have an operator on board, and they've signed an agreement. They would love to have 150 all the time, but they, it will vary. It probably won't be at that level, especially to, in the beginning of the rental period, you know, when they start signing up people.
So, is that number lower than your last, previous application?
I think it was 189 last time.
Yeah, I thought it was 189 or 198 or something, but it was a high, high number, so.
Right. It was a higher number, and then we lowered it. We agreed, I think, to 138, but this is 150. So, we withdrew.
I know there's a need for daycare facilities in the state, so I kind of assume you'll be pretty well full, or at least a good number as you go along, but I don't know all those answers. But, so another question I have is the dumpster. I've seen the dumpster on the plans. So, you're doing a rear-loading dumpster? Is that what I read in the plans?
It could be rear-loading or front-loading. You know, it depends on what company, but I think most of them are front-loading unloaders.
Okay.
The rear-loading truck, we ran that through, because it's not quite as maneuverable as the other one. So, if the rear-load can get to it, then the front-load can definitely get to it, so.
My concern was for the safety of case a dumpster is coming in, I mean, a dumpster company is coming in to pick up, and then, you know, having to back up
Right.
you know, with possibly children crossing, and hopefully parents are aware of what's happening in the parking lot and would be, you know, cognizant of the fact that there's a dumpster being picked up
Right.
and they're aware of it too, but so if there's a front-loading, you can pull in, pick up, and then unload it and then put it back, correct? Right? So, okay. That was one of my concerns. Just for, again, it's all about the safety of the kids for me, you know? I mean, that's number one for me. Where are we with traffic? Did we do? So, I'm looking here, so I don't recall we did any waivers to allow for no-traffic studies. Is that accurate?
They submitted a traffic study. The board did not elect a peer review.
Okay. On this application or the last one? Oh, okay. My memory isn't that great, so that's why I figured I asked, so. With that, I'm all set. Thank you very much.
Mr. Duffy?
I have no questions, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Champa?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just, we are asking our applicants to clarify. You have concrete walkways labeled throughout. Is that, I would think you're doing batuminous concrete, not cement concrete, but I just
They would be cement concrete.
They will be cement concrete?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so, because we've
We don't care internally, though.
True.
So, only the ones that are on the public.
All the walkways would be cement concrete.
Good.
Yeah. Okay. I have no other questions.
Mr. Lozai?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I think where you have the sidewalks now is a big improvement over kind of last
It is.
behind all the cars.
Have to thank the board for pushing us into coming up with a better solution.
Sometimes we can help. Are there any, do you have buses that come in here, or is it just?
No, it would just be passenger vehicles.
Okay. Yeah, with that, I don't have any other questions.
I don't have a question, but the only one that I'll, I want to make sure gets added in is that the ground markers, that they be maintained clearly and visibly at all times?
The pavement markings?
Yeah, so that, those arrows that tell you which way you're supposed to go. If we forget to tell people to make sure they remain visibly painted
Right.
and then they get worn away, and now people are just like, well, I can go anywhere I want, because I don't see those arrows anymore. So, I want to just make sure that gets added. But other than that, I'm all set.
Yeah, we did add signage too, just to reinforce the arrows.
All that has to be maintained in perpetuity, but I want to make sure I always say the ground markings when we want ground markings, because that disappears after a little while and one winter.
Right. They get done every year. Yeah.
All right. So, with that, I'll open to the audience. Anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns? Only once, twice, return to the board. What is the pleasure of the board?
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
We have a motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimous. As to the waiver request, do I have a motion on the waivers?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the waivers listed for 770 Main Street.
Motion made. Do I have a second? Motion made in second. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. As to the site plan review, what is the pleasure of the board?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the site plan review permit.
All right, with the conditions as listed, plus the one tonight, so we have a motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. As to the land disturbance permit.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the land disturbance permit for 770 Main Street.
Motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimous. All right, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome.
Mr. Osgood, I want to thank you for putting those sidewalks in. I think the kids at Tucksbury here, we're going to be using them on a regular basis, will thank you as well.
I, I think it, it's going to be a nice site.
Yeah.
People are going to be really comfortable getting there.
Thank you.
That brings us to agenda item H, 1695 Shawshin Street. This is continued from our 212 meeting as well.
I don't see anybody here for that. Oh, yeah.
Your name for the record, and the floor is yours.
All right, thanks very much. Jeff Kettner, it's with VHB. Following up from our last meeting, we had some open items with DPW that we've since closed the loop, so just like to give you guys a quick update on, on those. Happy to run through any of the other presentation, presentation material as well. It's helpful. Since we, we did some follow-up test pits for the stormwater design, I'll flip to the grading and drainage plan. On the southern end of the building, some of those gentlemen before me mentioned, we found some results that indicated the ground was a little, little more wet than some of the previous information, so we relocated the stormwater design to the north portion of the building, based on those test pit results, and updated the stormwater management report in review with DPW accordingly. Some other minor comments from their end, just addressing the grading on the adjacent property to the north, and making sure that the joint properties were cited in the permits they'll be obtaining for the work. Couple updates to some of the drainage details in the set, detailing some manholes and outlets from the stormwater system. Layout-wise, the modification we made, we, we striped out some additional spaces on the southern end of the site to, to block off some additional area for access to the transformer and the loading area. Other than that, plan content's consistent with the last meeting, but happy to answer any questions or follow-up as needed.
Mr. Duffy?
So can you give us, just explain to me why we needed to remove the eight parking spaces?
It was, it was really a VE, value engineering effort. We, we kind of weighed, looking ahead to construction, weighed the cost of the additional earthwork retaining wall that those eight spaces would get, and it was a single-loaded bay, so it wasn't as efficient as some of the front bays. So it really came down to some value engineering to pull that limit back.
Okay, and am I looking at, a little hard for me to make that out right there, but I'm looking at cement, concrete sidewalks along Shawshin there?
Correct.
Yellow?
Correct.
Okay. That's really all I have, Mr. Chairman. It seems to be, I mean, engineering seems to be, you know, they, they have zero issues with the, with the modifications, so I'm good to go.
Mr. Lozai?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just reviewed the notes and satisfied with all the changes that appear to be done per specifications and bylaws, and I have no problems with the changes. I think I'm all set.
All right, Mr. Lozai?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, my request looks good for myself as well.
Mr. Champa?
I have no questions, Mr. Chairman.
The chair agrees with Mr. Champa. I got nothing left. Open up to the audience. Anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns? Going once, twice, return to the board. What is the pleasure of the board?
Making a motion, Mr. Chairman, to close the public hearing.
Motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. As to the modification of the site plan review, what is the pleasure of the board?
Making a motion, Mr. Chairman, we approve the modifications to the site plan review at 1695 Shawshin Street.
We have a motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries, unanimous. As to the land disturbance permit?
I'm making a motion, Mr. Chairman, we approve the land disturbance permit at 1695 Shawshin Street.
We have a motion made. Do I have a second? Motion made in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Unanimous. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. That brings us to agenda item I. Get one thing out of the way first, before I have you guys give your names to the record. We've all seen it, there's been stuff that's come in to us, people have seen it online. It has to do with a different hearing on a different site, that may or may not include petitioners involved in this site. Regardless of that fact, that is not an issue for this hearing. We're here, and we're dealing with a zoning issue, so we're not going to discuss that either from anyone up here, or anyone who comes up to the podium. If you come up to the podium and start talking about that stuff, you have forfeited your time, and you will be done with your public comments. If you want to bring that stuff up, the only possible place that that might be appropriate is the select board, not here. All right? So that we made that clear for everybody, that's not part of making a zoning decision, and it's not something that's resolved in any way anyways. So it's not something we can use as a factor. So we'll make sure we clear that up right up at the front. All right? So with that, if you give your names to the record, gentlemen, the floor is yours.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. For the record, David Plunkett represents the applicant before the board here tonight. At the table with me tonight is Kim Hazabadian from the traffic engineer, Matt Hammer from Landplex, and Dean Graffio, who is a principal of the principal that will be operating the site. Mr. Chairman, at the last meeting, we were actually close to closing the public hearing, but there are a few items that, you know, were brought up to tie up loose ends, and I, I feel that we have addressed those issues. Relative to the landscaping, I'll have Mr. Hammer present, you know, where we're showing the landscape, additional landscaping, and the effect upon the adjoining area relative to the proposed development of, of the site, as well as the, the right turn only is going to be with the concrete, what is that ripple, not ripple?
Cerated.
Cerated, the concrete to force, you know, to make, accentuate the right-hand turn only. In addition, there was presented a memorandum relative to, one of the last items that Mr. Champa brought up, relative to the queuing of cars coming into the site, our, our ability to work with the operation next door being the learning center, and I think that we have presented a very comprehensive proposal relative to monitoring the site, the, the ability to assure that they'll be under control at all times, and a number of other additional, you know, safeguards that the applicant is willing to undertake, including where they've submitted a dedicated line for anyone with any questions relative to the operation of the site, to have immediate action or response from the, from the developer at the site as it's, you know, ongoing. So, again, I, I feel comfortable that we have addressed everything, all the issues that were brought up, and we will go through, I'll have Mr. Hammer review certain things first, if that's the way you want to handle the chronology of it.
For the record, Matt Hammer with Landplex Engineering and Surveying, 10 George Street, Lowell, Mass. So, as Attorney Plunkett had stated, we have done some additional changes or additions to the plan, two of which are to add some rumble-turning, concrete, scoured areas, the exits of the entrance here, which is to Andover Street, and the entrance here to the access drive, so that it encourages that right-hand turn with the configuration of that defined area. Secondly, the landscaping has been updated from the prior plan, which was approved-- and has been added. So the landscape plan is added to the plan set as the last sheet, and Howard Snyder, landscape architect, has updated this plan to include additional trees along this buffer area that was requested by Mr. Duffy, so we've done that. There's also trees that are set back from the, the exit of this drive as well, and you can see the full landscaping plan that was in, was from a prior approval, and we've updated that plan with this new plan, and now it's incorporated into the plan set.
And you were able to do that without messing with the swale, right?
That's correct. The swale's still intact, yes.
Okay. And-- Alex, why you got that up? And does anybody have any questions about the landscaping plan?
No, no questions here.
I have just one question, Mr. Hammer, is how far is the marijuana building from the school? Any idea? Looking on a map, it looked like it was pretty, like almost opposite corners?
Yeah, we did a rough calculation when this came up before. I believe it to be somewhere around 400 feet.
From building to building?
From, from, from--
The daycare center to--
Yeah, I think at the point it was from entrance to entrance that I, I did a rough calculation before, but I would say from maybe building corner to building corner might be 375, something along that line.
It seemed like it was a pretty good distance from the plans I seen in the, in the map I seen, where you're proposing this, this building, to where the school is on, on a Tucksbury GSI map.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Mr. Duffy, did you have a landscaping question?
I, I do appreciate the modifications to the landscape plan, but after I looked at it, I said, I had a little concern about the second driveway exit, that there might be a line of sight issue there. Right. Maybe you could just talk about that a little bit. So what happens there is the actual edge of pavement is here, okay? The distance taken from the driver and the vehicle is set back 10 feet from that area, and the tree, which is on that island, is set back even further. Okay. So that is, that is not going to block the line of sight. Yeah. I think it's great that you have addressed the concern, you know, the screening between you and the neighbor, and I appreciate the outreach with you and the neighbor as well. I think it's, I think it speaks highly of your, of your intentions there. I think, I think the landscape modification is pretty good, and I think that's pretty much all I have on that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Not sure if it's really landscaping up, but Mr. Lozai had a question.
So my question is, why did we change the exit to right turn only on, from that, that exit?
This was actually a request that came from Lowell Five. When we reached out to Lowell Five initially, they had requested us to do a right turn only. If you recall, Lowell Five came to that first meeting, I don't know if you remember that.
I do, yeah.
And it was something that they requested. It's always been part of our initial plan from the start, to have that right turn only, leaving here under their request.
It just seems to me that if somebody's coming out of the daycare and wanted to go right, they could, correct? And cut through?
If somebody, if, anyone can cut through the site, but they're going through a, a series of parking areas that are comprised of, you know, that's Lowell Five's headquarters, so, you know, when you're coming off of International Place, it's more of a parking lot for the employees. If you--
I think, if I'm not mistaken, I think Mr. Lozai's question, what he's saying is, if you come out of the daycare, you can go right and go into Lowell Five, but this one is limited in that. Are you asking why?
Yes, so because Lowell Five requested that?
They just requested that, you know, that we put the sign up to prohibit, or to, to lessen the amount of people that would go to Lowell Five. If someone's going to Lowell Five, they're going to go to Lowell Five. They have a, a branch at Lowell Five on the, on the ground floor. They also have a teller branch, if you recall. I don't know if you recall, if we were before the planning board or the zoning board of appeals--
ATM?
An ATM. It's an ATM, but you can actually do a transaction. We call it a remote teller, because there were people that didn't want to go in the building to do a transaction, and they requested that this remote teller be provided, and it has a, an air tube that actually connects to the bank itself, and actually--
Yeah, it's like an island out in the parking lot, sort of.
So, so if somebody is going to go to the bank, they're going to take a left-hand turn. They just requested that we provide that signage, because if people weren't going to the bank, you just gave them a, a heads up that they, that they, they should right, not take a left.
Okay. It just seems to me with that, you know, with us, with you okaying that, and us okaying that, that is, it's adding more traffic to 133, because they're not, if somebody wants to go to North Street, they could go left to the parking lot, to International Place, and up North Street.
They most certainly can. They can do that, yes.
Well, they can't do it now, because you're making a right turn only.
It's a request, it's, let's put it this way, if you took a left-hand turn and went out to International Place, I don't believe you can get a ticket from the police to do that.
No, no, I don't think so.
Okay. So it's, it's to encourage folks to go back to Andover Street.
Okay. All right. All right, thank you.
That's it on the landscaping? We're good?
Okay, going then, Mr. Chairman, to the dispensary line queue and parking lot management response memo. I think to encapsulate, to summarize that, Mrs. Lauder has proposed waivers and conditions for the application before the board tonight, and I would say that, you know, we're in full agreement with, with all those items, as well as her reference to the fact, to the potential that the board might want to incorporate Mr. Dirk's recommendations, which basically to incorporate, you know, the terms of the memorandum that was submitted, plus some specifics that he had in his memorandum as well, and that we're fully prepared to say, yes, that's, that's fair and reasonable, that we're in agreement, agreement with that. So, you know, it's a situation where, you know, certainly we're open to any specific questions at this point, relative to the specifics of that queueing and management, including, you know, the traffic monitors, you know, the parking lot monitors, to assure where employees park, where, where customers come in, whether to be parked first, that we will monitor anyone that's in violation, plus additional, again, going above and beyond, having these dedicated contact information for anyone with any questions or concerns, you know, as I say, whoever you want to address those questions to. But just to put in perspective, at this time, I think what we are looking to present here at the, to summarize this meeting tonight is, we are here on a matter that, you know, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Legislature legalized cannabis dispensaries. Town of Massa, Town of Tucksbury adopted certain rules and regulations to incorporate that proviso that was enacted by the legislature, and we're in a spot that the Town of Tucksbury has indicated would be a spot for which this type of cannabis retail store would be in allowed use in that area. At this point, part of the process is that we're here for a site plan review, you know, and we're very cognizant of trying to address all the concerns of the board, understanding that when something is new, very often there's, you know, there are questions because there's not a history. So we're, we're certainly, you know, aware of that, and that's why we're trying to address every issue that the board has brought up before, before us. As we stated before, you know, Mr. Graffio is a resident of the town, he's a current business owner in town, and, you know, he's going to take great concern that everything is done as it should be. So, you know, I, I think what we've submitted is, we believe that we've addressed every issue that the board has brought up, and, you know, so we stand, we have Mr. Hazabadian here, we have other people in the audience, if there are other questions that come up, so certainly we're ready to take any questions at this time.
So before, before I do that, let me just clarify something that might make it easier for some of us, but your dispensary line queue and parking lot management response memo, and then what I presume would be something that would be going on the website? Is that what this, this one is?
There was an additional page that was--
That's the welcome to Route 133? Is that meant to be something that would you see on the website?
Yes.
I can speak to that. Caitlin Woodward Sampson, Gulf Standard Management, that is, goes into the employee onboarding packet to let them know what options they have.
All right. So what I would, what I was going to ask is that, that we include a request that these two things are updated once a year and sent to the office to be kept in the file, so that if anybody needs to see that, you know, or make any request for any kind of update or tweak to those things, that, you know, that they can be. And then that'll be one of the conditions, that, you know, you update them, and that, you know, should you get back any feedback, you know, you'll make your best efforts to incorporate that feedback, you know, based on, you know, the review each year. All right? So that, I think that, that's, that's all, I just wanted to make sure that those things can be added. Yeah. And then also, just before we open this up, I just wanted to give our traffic, traffic engineer an opportunity to weigh in on anything.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Jeffrey Dirk with Vanessa Associates, the town's peer review consultant. I think the applicant's representative has made a good summary of kind of what's transpired since the last meeting, consistent with, I think, the questions that the chair had asked. One of the things that we have recommended, the applicant submitted a very well-thought-out queue management, and basically traffic and parking management plan, of which there are two pieces that we suggested should be included as a part of any conditions that the board would consider. What you had mentioned is one of those items. It goes hand in hand with the plan they're implementing. The second piece being the parking management plan, which shows how they will park customers in the parking lot, in terms of how they'll order the used spaces, which we think is important, as you said, to go hand in hand with the application, so that it's on file as to how they'll operate the site. Those measures, I would suggest, are consistent with what we've seen in place at other dispensaries, and they are extremely effective in reducing traffic and parking demands and queuing. So we think that that will go a long way towards, in terms of addressing queuing within the site, and also specifically the impacts on the learning center, because I think there's a well-thought-out plan as it relates to minimizing impacts during student drop-off and pickup as well, as a part of that. So that, we'd suggest it should be a part of the conditions of approval, so.
And as my understanding is, you're on board with that.
Mr. Dirk's recommendations are fully approved.
All right. Very good. All right, with that, I'll open it up to the board. We'll start with Mr. Champa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Will the employee spaces be marked, or will there be signage for those, or is it just something that will be informed? I mean, your employees will know where to park, but how will your customers know not to park there?
We can place employee-only signage up. They weren't going to be parked there. They're going to be kind of the first that get filled as employees come in, so they just wouldn't be open to the public. But if we needed to, we would absolutely put employee-only signage there. I don't want to prevent customers from parking there if they're full.
How many would that be?
There's six.
There's six? All right. Just because you're, you're raising the point, I'm only curious, because in the event that there's, there's employees who may be Uber there and didn't need the space, but now you're not going to be able to put a customer in there, I don't know, is there, how many we should mark off? That's why I'm curious, you know what I mean? Because once you mark them off, then it's done. You know what I mean? Whether you have six cars, you don't have six cars.
And, Mr. Chairman, also, just in terms of, I understand the, the filling of the spaces that they're committing to is going to be in accordance with this plan, relative to the bodies, customers coming in, that they're going to fill these lower spaces for us. So every space is going to be filled by the, you know, will be directed by the lot manager to abide by our plan as submitted here, in terms of how we're going to address this issue of, of the queuing, so.
I mean, it's up to you, if you have a preference. I just wanted to throw it out.
I was just curious, kind of on the same idea. I mean, I've seen, you know, so I, I've seen-- I mean, I've seen, you know, so I, I've seen places where they have multi-tenants and spaces are reserved, you know, and they'll put up signage so that they have reserved spaces for just their tenants. But what I've seen is, at different hours, when you know one business is closed, or the other, or something like that, people just park whatever's closest to where they're actually going. So I don't, you know, I wasn't looking for much here, I was just, it was more of a curiosity. And I was curious also, like, if you were planning on enforcing that, or whether you... I, I know generally, I think the amount of parking you have here, it, it seems like it's more than adequate for your, your customers and your quick pickups and all of that. So, you know, it would, you would have to be really bustling for people to be back in that employee parking lot area.
And just to add, the reason we chose to put employees there is that our employees are held to an extremely high standard, and that they can also monitor that back lot as a second pair of eyes as they're leaving and entering the facility. So it's just to help better navigate with the neighbors.
Okay. So we, I would just, normally the employees would be there first, so, and then there would be some coming in. So I really don't think that's going to be necessarily an issue where they have control of the entire parcel and aren't competing with neighboring businesses as well. So, like I said, they'll be there first.
I was just, I was also thinking in terms of, like, if you have a shift change midday, you know, if you have four employees there and four employees coming in, you only have six spaces. So that, you know, I was just thinking a little bit about that also, but it's, it's not a concern.
Okay.
I was just curious about it. Because, so one of the things that happens is, you provided such detailed information that we're actually able to, to picture things in our head and ask detailed questions. Are your parking lot attendants, are those going to be people hired full-time just to staff the parking lot? Or is that something that, as your business is monitoring, you realize that parking is getting full to a certain point, you'll have somebody move from inside to outside? You know, whether it's a stock person, or retail support person, something like that?
So all of our employees will be cross-trained. We will hire specific employees to monitor the parking lot. A parking lot monitoring employee is very different than an inventory management employee. So what we're going to be doing is, we'll have admissions employees, bartenders, and all of those types of people that all be cross-trained. They will all have microphones, so they can speak to each other in real time, including our managers on duty, our front desk attendants, our security attendants, and our parking lot attendants. So anytime we need an influx of control management, we will have a plan in place to execute that.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Mr. Louder. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, I appreciate you guys laying out the landscaping and stuff on the right side there. I think that goes a long way towards, you know, helping us picture that site here. I also appreciate the rumble strips. I really do think, you know, forcing those cars to even start the nudge out that way can, can help there. I think kind of on the parking thing, looking at how these numbers are spaced, like, are, are the attendants actually going to be, like, pointing people at a specific lot? Is this like at a stadium when you get somebody waving all the cars in? Or is it kind of more of a, spaces are open and they'll fill up while they...
For control management, depending on peak hours, then yes, absolutely, they'll have directional lighting that will point them into positions, like when you're loading in kind of a big fare or any of those types of things. We're just trying to prevent them into that back overflow lot while that busier time is happening. Will we do that every hour, every operational hour of the day? Probably not. It's probably not necessary. But until the facility is operational, we'll be able to really pinpoint designated times that it's a must-have, and then times that it's a best-have, and then times that we need to flex out.
Yeah. And then I think you had called out specifically in kind of the traffic plan, you know, of days like the grand opening, you might have, you know, police detail there. Are there other sort of like, I don't know, holidays, special occasions where the store is disproportionately busy? Or is it, you know, really just some rare occasions?
There are two holidays specifically in cannabis. So you're going to find 4/20 being one of them, April 20th, as well as 7/10, Oil Day. Those are pretty much the only two recreational holidays in the cannabis calendar, other than that, it's just standard retail.
And do those holidays, is it enough of a bump in traffic to have a detail on those days?
It depends on the marketing strategy and the marketing plan. With this facility, we don't intend on putting things in the parking lot at this time, but there are facilities out there that do host events in their parking lot.
Okay. And then I think the only other question I had, we had mentioned kind of, you know, potentially having a follow-up, you know, if you've been in business for six months or a year, kind of coming back and seeing how things are going traffic-wise. Do we have those kind of check-ins set up? Or proposed when we would do them?
Louder, did we have that implemented for this?
That wasn't a part of these waivers and conditions, but it has been put in other applications. So it can certainly be accommodated here if the applicant is amenable.
I mean, it's been enough of a conversation, a concern. I don't see why not, just to be able to have the conversation, if, if we need a conversation. I think that would be where, I mean, I have no idea when you'll actually open, presuming you're open. So you might find that, we, we find out that the 4/20 one was a, you know, should have had a detail there. So someone can then say, you know what, for these two holidays from now on, it looks like you're going to need that, you should have that, kind of, you know, that we can have that conversation. Does that make sense?
Yes.
All right. So we can add that, if, if that's, you have no objection, correct?
That would be to come back to the board, that request of the board, is that what...
Mr. Louder.
Not necessarily. So the requirement that we've exercised in the past is to have the applicant submit a traffic study six months after full operations, to see if there have been any significant issues or, you know, areas of concern that would require mitigation. And then again, at 12 months after full operations, and then, you know, only as requested from there.
Yeah, but that it's not...
But it would just be a submission to the office.
Yeah, it's really just to make sure that we weren't wrong when we looked at it the first time.
All right. So not set dates, but as requested, at six and 12 month intervals?
Well, the first two would just be sent in. After that, it would only be if something, like, laid down the road came up. I, I don't know what that would be. I don't know why anybody would ask. These are just to confirm that we weren't wrong. I believe, I think Treehouse was one that we did this with, and they've got multiple ones that they have to send in to us before we stop. And, you know, I mean, it's, you know, it's really, it's, it's just to confirm we weren't wrong with the stuff we had, and we don't have to ask you to be like, well, turns out we need to do a little tweak here somewhere to fix it.
No, that's fine, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Is that, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Louder.
Yeah, I think that's, that's all the questions I have.
Mr. Duffy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wonder if I could get a clarification on, on the street opening permit bond? Now, I would assume that you're at least going to need water and sewer, possibly natural gas and possibly underground electric, is there electric underground, do you know?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So let's just assume, so I guess is it 5,000 each? Or is it 5,000 for all of the street openings?
If one street opens.
Okay. So my concern here is, and it's something that I feel hopefully we can all agree, might be a condition of approval, of approval here, would be that the specification for the patching on the street opening would be approved by engineering department. And I don't know, I'm sure that's probably not a typical, Route 133 is a pretty busy road. I've seen a lot of cross-cuts, you know, perpendicular cuts across roads all over Tewksbury that get patched, and, and a year later, they're crumbling apart, and, and nobody really owns them. So I would like to think that there would be, because it's such a well-traveled road, and there are going to be street cuts, that there would be some kind of an enhanced, high-quality patch specification there.
I mean, that's up to the town engineer on that. I know some of the utilities have been stubbed off the road, namely the water. I'm not sure about the sewer. I believe there was a sewer stub put in. Honestly, I don't know how much work is going to be in the road in terms of what's needed, but at the end of the day, through that street opening permit, that's up to the...
I guess I would like to ask that you coordinate that with them.
Well, that...
Because, because, you know, National Grid, or whoever did the gas line along Whipple Road last year, I mean, that is just a hack job, the whole length of Whipple Road, the, the patching that was done down there. So where is the oversight there, I guess?
The oversight's in the Department of Public Works.
Yeah.
And the town engineer. So you, you're in good hands there with your municipal departments that, that oversee and have the jurisdiction on that. There's nothing I could tell you tonight that would be different than what they would require for that work.
Okay. So do they deal with the, with the utility companies? Or do they deal with your developer?
Any work in the town right-of-way is under the jurisdiction of the Town of Tewksbury.
So I, I don't get that.
Meaning if you go into the town right-of-way to do any work, it's under the jurisdiction of the Department of Public Works, and presumably the town engineer to oversee and to require whatever is necessary to do that work.
Okay. Okay. Because, I mean, even the 5,000 seems like an antiquated dollar amount. You know what I mean? It seems like, like, what can you get done for $5,000?
Well, it might even be more than that, depending on what the bonding would require for each individual component of the work needed in the right-of-way.
I just want to see a high-quality patch on the, on any street openings. That's what I want to see. And I'll be looking for, to see how that, how that all shakes out.
Great.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's it.
Mr. Patel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So looking at your map here, gentlemen, I see your employee parking on the right side going out. Why wouldn't you use spaces 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, whatever, on the left side? Seems like it's out of the way for, for employees to park there for the day, or whatever, and then not have to park in the right-hand corner.
I think that was the, the suggestion was to put them closest to the, the learning center spaces, so that it's just, you don't have traffic, you don't have spaces in and out, and the flow, excuse me, would be more on the lower-numbered parking spaces as shown on the plan. But this here would eliminate the activity that's closest to the learning center.
Okay. All right. Great. Thank you. One more item I seen in our packet, and that was from Mr. McMahon, I see him in the back. So I see you have a correlation between the Town of Gill, Massachusetts, and I'm almost kind of annoyed at the fact that you're trying to compare Gill, Massachusetts to Tewksbury, Massachusetts, you know, as a correlation of facility-wise and all that. I mean...
No, not trying to compare the towns at all. Very, very, very different towns. It's the, the layout and operations of the store that I was comparing. So Caitlin and I just did a store up in Gill. The internal layout of the store is going to be very similar. They use the same type of line queue plan, it's just modified for their parking lot. So physicality of the two towns, very different. Physicality of the two stores, very different, but operational plans, that, that's what's similar.
Okay. So the parking lot was part of this plan that you did up there?
We did. So they, they have a long, narrow parking lot, rather than this sort of V-shaped one, but we used the same system of designate spaces, put employee parking in what for there was a more problematic area. The parking lot's kind of L-shaped around the building. They were concerned that people would cut down and around the face of the building, so we said, we'll park the employee cars along the building wall, and that way no one will be able to cut through. So using the same concepts, essentially.
So do you know the population of Gill, Massachusetts?
Gill is about 1,500 people.
Yeah, we have about 30,000 people in Tewksbury. So the correlation between the two of them was like, what are you trying to do here? I mean, you're taking us for something, we don't, we know the town pretty well, so. So I was taken back by that email, but...
When I go to Gill, I have my dinner at a, at a gas station. I'm much happier coming to the meetings here.
Okay. All right. With that, I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
I'm all set. I, I'm, I'm just trying to stop myself, because we had an occasion at town meeting where we got compared, changes were made, two towns just like that, and I tried to point that out at town meetings, and I was ignored, you know, towns that have 1,000 people in them. But that's fine. I'll open up the audience here. Anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns? Come on up.
Judith Jaddis, 55, Deering Drive. First of all, I'd like to comment on the presentation tonight. I don't see how they've made any changes as far as the flow of traffic onto 133. I know at the main entrance, they're saying you'll only go right, okay? The other way you can go from the back part of the parking lot, you'll go onto the strip of, of the driveway by the ATM, but you're still coming out onto 133. I think that's what they proposed before, and it's still the same. Am I correct?
Yeah. The difference here, and what they were responding to, was the board's request to put in the rumble strips that force the right turn and discourage the left turn, that without the rumble strip would be a little easier to pull off, harder to do with the rumble strip in the way. So that's, so it was always meant to be exactly that. This is just meant to better ensure that the right turns are what the person coming out is more forced to do.
So do I understand that the one by the ATM can only, from the parking lot, it will only go to the right? So that it's not going over near the school? When you get down to the end of the driveway, are you only allowed to go right there as well?
I don't believe we restricted that.
And so what I'm saying is, you still have the same traffic problem.
But that's a pre-existing road, like drive, I don't know, was it driveway?
Access road.
Access, that was approved before. We're not changing that. That's not theirs to change anyways.
I understand, but it's a big difference between an ATM machine exiting there and this cannabis business.
Well, I mean, to be fair, exiting from there is the bank machine, the daycare, and potentially the people from the bank in the back, should they so choose to. So those already exist.
Okay. Fine. I think the people in the back, though, don't choose to. The other thing I'd like to mention is, at the last meeting, some comments were made at the very end by the board. And one was that the site, the board praised the location as one very desirable, because at the present time, it just has boulders and vegetation. And personally, I don't find that very upsetting, that I'm looking at boulders and shrubs and trees. I do find it upsetting that I'm going to look at a big building that says in big letters, As far as the location being desirable, the person stressed that it was great to have an empty lot filled in. Today, I was on Route 38, and I went by French's Restaurant. How many years has that been empty? Then I went by the BP Station. How many years has that been empty? Then I went to the area that I call Preferred Distributors. I don't know if that was the last name, near St. Williams Church. That has been empty for years as well. One other area that I'm familiar with because of the board meeting is the one that sells pizza. And as far as I can see, there was no one opposing that. They seem to have satisfied all the requirements of the board. It's an already existing building, it's in a less heavily traveled part of 38. I have no connection to the people that want to use that. But it just baffles me why we have these other places in town, which I have to say are eyesores, really. And we're not, and we don't have any initiative to get those developed. One other thing was, it was mentioned last time, that besides Tewksbury, a lot of towns have traffic. That's true. But I don't have to go to those towns, and I don't want to make my town like those. I go up to Salem, New Hampshire right now, mile after mile after store, concrete, asphalt. Do we want Tewksbury to look like that? It was, it's also been implied that we in North Tewksbury are against commercialization. Well, we were when we first moved there, because it was all residential. Now we're more or less resigned. Okay, it's going to be, have some commercial development. But I would like a nail salon, a bakery, a dentist's office, a doctor's office. I can think of a lot of businesses that I would like to have go in there, but not this cannabis. One other thing, today I went by the new cannabis... One other thing, today I went by the new cannabis operation on 38 in Lowell, just over the line. It has a huge parking lot. There was not one open space in that parking lot, and that was at 2:00 in the afternoon. I don't think that's what we want in this part of Tewksbury. So you might notice attendance is a little light tonight, and I think people have gotten discouraged. I think they feel that the board has already made up its mind. One thing that maybe makes them feel that way is the new shrubbery that has been put up as a buffer between the school and the proposed cannabis property. So I'm hoping that you still have an open mind and will take all these things into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else with any questions, comments, or concerns?
Michelle Stella, 80, Pauli's Place. I don't have long notes. I'm not going to be repetitive. I've been here a number of times. I've said what we all already know. So I'm just here to let you know, I'm still here, I still care. I'm still very concerned about the amount of traffic that I absolutely believe is going to happen if this goes in, and the safety issues, I still believe are as real as when I said them the first time. So I'm just up here to reiterate, the folks that are not here tonight, I actually think some of them are confused about the meeting, but I do agree, I think some are starting to feel that sentiment is out there, that decisions have already been made because of the look of the, I mean, the shrubbery being up and it being cleared a while back. But that's another issue. So again, just reiterating, we believe there are going to be major traffic problems. We believe there is going absolutely to be safety issues that come with it. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Alex Pratt, 125, Pauli's Place. Couple things. First of all, I want to know whether or not there will always be a manager in the parking lot area to control traffic, even in bad weather? And so that's a question. My second point is going to be that in your map here, you've added this outflow, which we've all talked about a lot, but these people are going to come down here and they are going to take a right. The people who come out of the parking lot, wherever the exit is, they're going to take a right. So I don't think this is going to solve your problem. I also think, no matter what you put in for a distraction, people are going to go through the big parking lot. And I have been over in the bank parking lot with some frequency, and I always am seeing people tear through going each way, towards 133 and back towards the backside of the bank. So there's a fair amount of traffic, and when the cars are parked there because the bank people are working, that can be a fairly dangerous place for pedestrians who are not paying attention. My next and probably last point is the traffic issue is very important coming towards Lowell. That's where the backups are. So I did try to send you a video. Unfortunately, there are too many Johnsons, and I think I sent it to the wrong one. But I think the select board got it. But at any rate, I did take video of traffic on 133 heading north around 4:00, and it was backed up. It might have been a day of an accident, as I said before, but it was backed up. So now you got all these people coming and want to go to the pot shop, and the traffic is going to be incredibly crazy, coming towards Lowell and wanting to turn left into this place. I think it's going to be a serious problem. And unfortunately, we're not going to have any recourse except to either complain to you, complain to the pot shop, or call the police if we have to because of traffic issues where there's danger of an accident. So I really hope the board will consider what this is going to do to our neighborhood and take, take our thoughts into consideration before approving this project. Thank you.
All right. Okay. So I'll bring it back to the board. Anybody have anything additional they want to ask or add?
Nothing here.
Any?
Nothing.
Any issues outstanding?
No issues here.
All right. Okay. So with that, I'll ask the board, what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, could I just make sure that we have as the request, the waivers as set forth in Mrs. Lauda's memorandum?
The three that are listed. You don't have anything else, right?
Correct. And the only other issue relative to the recommendations specifically in Mrs. Lauda's report, in terms of monitoring right turn-only compliance shall be completed by intervals set. Again, I think it's inferred by report of the applicant. We're not talking about a third party doing a monitoring.
No, that would be the applicant.
Yeah, okay.
If it's amenable to the board and the applicant, we can merge those two conditions to both monitor the traffic and the right turn-only compliance and have those be reports at six and 12-month intervals and then any requests thereafter.
Yeah. Is that all right with everybody?
Yes.
All right. Then I will ask again, the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion and close the public hearing.
All right, a motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, so starting with the waivers, we have a motion on the waivers.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we allow the waivers for section 6.1.8, 6.1.11, and 6.2.10 as stated.
All right, we have a motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
All right, so that's four to one. All right, moving on to the site plan review. We have a motion on the site plan review.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the site plan review.
All right, that's including all of the stipulations in the letter as well as those that were added this evening. All right, so that motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
Four to one. Land disturbance permit. Do I have a motion on the land disturbance permit?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the land disturbance permit.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
Four to one. All right.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Good luck.
All right, that brings us to agenda item correspondence. We didn't have any. Then other business not known at the time of posting this agenda? Nobody has anything? All right, that brings us to an adjournment. We have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made in second. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. We'll see you next time. Thank you.